Thirty first of July, meeting of the committee of the whole. Quite a full agenda, so we kick off until Ben gets here. The first item on the agenda is, they say, the call to order and then roll call.
Here.
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 I hear. Hicks or fish, whatever.
In mind if not in body. The first item on the agenda is a legislative update from Joel Carson.
Well, good morning, everyone. It is a pleasure to be back here in front of you. I told Andrew, you can invite me up any Wednesday morning in the summer that you want. This, I'm starting the weekend right now.
Must be rough.
And just wanted to have a chance to connect with the council, talk a little bit about what went on during the 2024 session, think a little bit about 2025 coming up, priorities. This marks the twentieth year that I've represented the city of Fergus Falls at the Capitol. And over that time, we've had a lot of projects and successes. And I love driving by them when I see them. And prior to that, for about four years, I worked for, on behalf of the city, through Lake Region Healthcare as we acquired the RTC and then Prairie Woodlands Learning Center. And then after that, I started representing the city directly after that. So Tower Road and ice arenas, libraries. We've had a lot of fun projects over the years. And I think it's really critical that communities in greater Minnesota be heard at the Capitol. And I appreciate the ability to represent you because I really do think vibrant rural communities are important. And all the amenities and things that you do is what makes places like Fergus Falls communities that people want to live in. And I think that's really important. So thank you for having me here. As noted in the media, the end of the session in 2024 was a little chaotic. They did get a few things done, and even in the last fifteen minutes, they got a few things done. But it was not as robust as what we thought going into the session in mid-February. We thought they would, again, pass a substantial bonding bill. They didn't. We thought they would do more reform of some of the programs they implemented in 2023, like paid family leave and earned sick and safe time that need some tweaks. They did a little, but not as far as I think some people were hoping that they would go. We had a project that we worked on with Clara right before she went on maternity leave that we were successful at getting about a half a million dollars for Lake Alice for water quality and habitat improvement. And that did make it across the goal lines, and that funding is now in place. And but beyond that, there was a lot of accomplishments as it related to, you know, greater Minnesota. Twenty twenty-three was a big year. We had a big bonding bill, which was great for us, and those projects are going on. We had the electric transition aid that was passed that will kick in in 2025. And we're working to see how much money that might mean to the budget, you know, for the city going forward. So we've had, we've had a, overall, twenty-three and twenty-four were pretty significant years. Twenty-four, a little, a little less. So I wanted to make sure, in talking with Andrew, I asked Andrew yesterday, how long do I have? And he said, well, you look like you have a few years left in you. No, I mean, how, how long do I, how long do I have this morning? And he said about fifteen, about fifteen minutes. So one of the things I wanted to make sure that you're aware of, you know, I do represent the city year round. It's not like the last day of session that I see you again in January. We've had all kinds of issues that come up from how deed wants to clarify or qualify money that we're entitled to out of grants that we've been awarded, trying to figure out how much that transition aid is, projects with the Lassard-Sams Outdoor Heritage Council or LCCMR. We had a big hassle last year. We had to turn some money back, which we fought like crazy to keep. And so I do represent you year round. When issues come up, please reach out to Andrew or me directly. You know, I always want to make sure that, you know, I don't get up over my skis by one member's agenda, right? I represent the whole group. But I'm here to advocate on behalf of the city and your interests. And so don't hesitate to call on me, and I know Andrew and Bill and others do. But please know that you have a resource there. And including, I think I picked up council member Hicks down at the hotel when he was here for League of Minnesota City Day. So I don't always provide the Uber service, but I'm happy to do it when it's available. Which, by the way, I represent Uber. And what a challenge that was in twenty twenty-four. And, you know, I feel a little bit bad about this as it relates to the city work that I do. But we had a situation where the legislature, you know, had to preempt the city of Minneapolis from what they were doing as it related to these companies that provide transportation services. And I'm not a big preemption guy. In fact, a bill that cities did not like as it related to your local zoning didn't make it through because it preempted your ability to zone and plan out your cities as you wanted. So, you know, on that permission, I was on the preemption side on that one because without it, you know, we just, we couldn't survive with that service. And it's not a tiny little operation in the metropolitan area. We provide about three hundred thousand rides a week. And the daily, the daily earnings for drivers in the metropolitan area is about four hundred thousand dollars. And Minneapolis had passed an ordinance that would essentially shut these businesses down. And the legislature said, no, we're not going to let that happen. So generally, I'm not working for a preemption of local government. But on that one, I just, I had to do what I needed to do there. So with that, Mayor, good to see you. And I'm happy to answer questions, talk about things that we have coming up and start thinking about 2025. It will be a full budget year. We don't know what the election will bring. You know, in 2024, the full House of Representatives is on the ballot. There are no statewide elections at the state level. We've got a US Senate race going on. And so we'll see if the chairs get rearranged in the election and then be ready for a full budget cycle, which puts LGA and everything else on the table. I forgot about some of the other things that happened in 2023, that local law enforcement assistance aid, which was significant. I mean, there were a lot of things that happened in twenty, in twenty-three and twenty-four. So I'll, I'll stop there and be happy to answer questions and look forward to continuing to work with you as long as I'm able.
Thanks, Joel. Appreciate it. We always, always recognize that your voice at the Capitol is very well respected by everyone there. And so our, that in turn, our voice is represented at the Capitol. And yeah, when I talk to people around the state, they know Fergus Falls and the issues that we're having at the Capitol because of your presence there. So we very much appreciate that. Questions from anyone on the council for Joel? If not, we would just say, thank you very much for the.
I think Mr. Rachel's had something.
I was the one who requested him come up.
Yeah.
It's just that I wanted to see the twenty-five, the LGA. Do you think the LGA is going to change in twenty-five? Is there any, that's my biggest question, I think it's going to be. Is the LGA going to change from what it is right now? Was there any talk about it?
I think it is fair to anticipate that there will be changes to LGA in 2025. The question is really going to be in what direction? And, and so, you know, if, if we have a status quo election and Speaker Hortman retains her speakership, then, you know, I think you can anticipate that there will be an upward adjustment in LGA. There were some people that thought they went a little too far in county program aid and LGA in 2023. And so if the election goes a different way, it might have a different outcome. There is also one special Senate election going on in Senate District Forty-five, which is around Lake Minnetonka. And we are right now, because the incumbent resigned to run for Congress, we're at a thirty-three, thirty-three split in the Minnesota Senate right now. So that one Senate seat is going to determine who controls the Minnesota Senate. And it's, I won't be, you know, it's a district that leans blue. I mean, I think the Democrats have a better chance. I think Biden won the district by about twelve points. Plus, it was a plus twelve Biden district. So you can anticipate that they'll, should do okay in that race. So the Senate, you know, likely stay in DFL hands. The House races are really up in the air. I mean, there's, it's a real battle for control of the Minnesota House. So yes, I think there will be adjustments. And the budget, you know, and I write about these things with some frequency. The budget has been stable, and they anticipate that to continue. You know, there was some storm clouds at the beginning of the 2024 session that the revenue forecast wasn't as strong as what they were projecting, and they were austere in what they spent in 2024. But it's, they ended up about five hundred million dollars above projections at the close of the fiscal year at July one of 2024. So I anticipate we won't be looking at significant budget reductions in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six cycle coming up. So that's a good thing when you're, when you care about things like LGA.
All right, thanks, Scott. Thank you, Joel. Any other, thanks for coming up this morning.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. And I, as I said, my weekend starts now, so I'm, although I'm not, I'm not staying in Minnesota. I'm going fishing on Devil's Lake, which I haven't, I haven't wet a line all year. So I'm looking forward to it. So, all right, good to see you. Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
All right, next, we will call on our Chief of Public Safety, Kyle Berger, to talk to us about a canine donation. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. Thank you, Your Honor. I think the first item you have before you is a donation of seven thousand five hundred dollars from the American Kennel Club. I think I had briefly talked to you before about purchasing a canine. We intend on purchasing that dog just into the first part of the year. And the officer and the dog will go to training, I believe, starting in February. So this certainly helps reduce the cost of not only the dog, but the training. So I ask you to accept that donation in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars.
Thanks, Chief. And we could do that with a motion to bring this to the council? Questions from Chief? All in favor of that motion to bring this to the council, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign that motion carries. Thank you. Second item from Chief Berger is cannabis registration ordinance.
Okay. So a lot of work has been done on the cannabis zoning ordinance. And I think you have a second reading coming up next Monday. This is kind of the last piece of the puzzle as far as ordinances go for cannabis businesses. This one's a little bit more straightforward than the zoning. Again, with, from the state, they sent out a model ordinance that the city followed fairly closely. Also been working with Otter Tail County. They've been working on a model ordinance. And our ordinance and their ordinance are very close as well, and that was intended. So again, we're not doing anything really any different than probably any other city or county within the state. I'm, I know we're kind of on a time crunch this morning. I'm just going to go through this and pick out some highlights. And I apologize, I think you kind of got a rough draft copy of the ordinance in your packet. But on page three, I'll start. One, there's a duplication in item number nine. The first one is called the place of a public accommodation. We'll probably just delete that from our ordinance as a whole just because we don't, we won't allow for the sale of consumption in any type of public place. It will have to be in private. Page four, under two point two, compliance checks prior to retail registration. I just want to point out that typically, when a, when a building goes through a change in occupancy, there has to be an upgrade to the building code and the fire code. Under this ordinance, there can also be a requirement if there's a change in the type of business. So that is what is highlighted there, and that is in consultation with our city building inspector. Page five, just very quickly, it sets out the fees. Again, these are, these are dictated by state law. At the bottom there, it talks about the application process. And there's just some very generic language in what is required for the application to include a site plan, security plan, signage, odor control plan. I'll probably add odor, it's more of an environmental thing with odor control and waste management needs to be discussed in that area. And those specifics are kind of, some of them are laid out within the state statute. Some of them, you will develop a policy as a council to regulate some of those things as well. Page six, two point three point four, selection process. Again, if more than one, or if, this is kind of a little bit out of order. Depending on how many licenses you allow to operate within the city, if there are more applicants than licenses that will be given, you as a city will need to establish, or you as a council, I'm sorry, will need to establish a policy on how that selection process will play out. And I think once we're done with the ordinance portion of this and we start to go into the selection process, I will step away from the process. And I think maybe Andrew and the Cannabis Committee will take over in that selection process. But again, just pointing out that there needs to be a process for that. Page eight, limiting registration. So here again, this is where we're talking about the number of retail licenses the city will allow. This is what we have in there now. Feel free to comment or if you want to change this. But at the last Cannabis Committee, we talked in two point six there that the city shall issue at least one registration for a cannabis retail business and may issue up to two. And then it says the city may further limit the number of cannabis retail businesses per zone. So I think when Andrew talked with the league, they talked a little bit about maybe some things should be in policy, some things should be in your ordinance. And we really kind of struggled on what the best language was so that you don't have to keep changing your ordinance every time you want to change the number of businesses. This also gives you the option, for example, to say you're going to allow one to operate in a B-three zone with an interim use permit, and you're going to allow one to operate in a B-six zone. Or it just allows you to say, we're just going to have one period, and we don't care what zone it's in. So I think the language there gives you, the council, some flexibility. And again, some of those, some of the minutia can be written out more in your policy. Page nine, it has the buffers there. Three point two talks about the zoning. If you pass the zoning ordinance, yes.
Can I, I think in the buffer section, we need to add language that makes it clear that it's, the buffer starts at the building or the parcel line. I think we need to make a decision about which. But in our adult use ordinance, we have it as buffering from the building itself. So I think we could carry that over if people agree.
Zoning, it just says, if you pass the zoning ordinance, that the businesses have to follow the zoning ordinance that you set out. Hours of operation, we have set the hours of operation from nine AM to nine PM. I think that mirrors fairly close with what the county, I think they had ten AM to nine AM. And I will talk with Nicole Hanson regarding some of those changes. Signage, it talks about no more than two affixed signs. That also, I think, kind of mirrors what we have for our sign ordinance for other businesses. Page ten talks a little bit about temporary cannabis events. Essentially, we are saying that you have to register if you're going to have that event. That event cannot take place on public property. It can only take place on private property. It is, it details buffers there. So for a cannabis event, we go out to the maximum, which is five hundred feet from a daycare residential treatment center, park, thousand feet from school or residence. It also sets the number of days in which the event can occur and the hours that the event can happen. And again, that, that follows along with the model ordinance from the state as well as the county.
Kyle, can we also just clarify, it's not all cannabis events? It's the ones that top consumption?
Yes, that is correct. So only if you have onsite consumption. So if you just have an event where you're handing out educational material, that wouldn't, the requirements of this permit would not apply. It's only applying to an event where you're having onsite consumption of cannabis products. And then the last major portion, so we have, we currently have an ordinance in place for the regulation of the business and the zoning for low potency hemp edibles. And I think I had talked with you a few times that there's a number of bars and restaurants that hold on-sale liquor licenses that would also like to sell the low potency hemp beverages. So these are the beverages that are allowed under federal law. So the last section there, five point three three, would allow for those businesses holding an on-sale liquor license through the city to also get a license to sell low potency hemp beverages. It would prohibit them from selling edibles. So they're only allowed to sell the beverages, not edibles. And then the zoning for that business must meet the zoning that would be required of an alcohol establishment, not a low potency edible establishment. So that is the gist. Like I said, this one is a little bit more straightforward than the, than the zoning. The only other thing that I'll bring up, just from a timing perspective, I think at the Cannabis Committee, we just wanted to make it clear if someone won, if you do pass the zoning ordinance on Monday, if somebody wanted to register a business in the downtown zone, there's a provision within state law that says we, as a city, only have thirty days to make that decision. We just want to make it clear to those people that may want to operate down there that that interim use permit is going to take longer than thirty days. So they would have to start that process first, make sure that they have received and been granted an interim use permit for that building from the city before they enter into the registration phase. So just from a mechanic standpoint, I just want people to make sure that they are aware of that, that given that the parameters that the state has put on us of having to respond within thirty days, if that is a place that they're going to operate, they're going to have to start that interim use process first. If you go out into a B-six zone, you probably aren't going to have to worry about those types of mechanics.
Just because there's no interim use.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thanks, Chief.
I got, I got a couple of things to say.
Go ahead, Anthony.
On number five, I kind of also put disposal plan. But I was also wondering, where has site plan, security plan, signage, odor? But what is the, I mean, what is the city, does the city have to segregate this, you know, from the normal waste stream? Or will it just go into the normal waste stream? And then is, if we have to segregate it, is there an additional cost for, for that product to be, quote, disposed of?
Sure, yes. You have to handle this waste. And again, these are the recommendations from the state of Minnesota, not just from the city of Fergus Falls. But yeah, let's say you have a product that is expired. You can't just throw it in the garbage can. It has to be a secure garbage container. I think that the processing of, of the waste is different. And again, those are things that we have to work on, like with Otter Tail County, since they do a lot of the waste management as well. Just to see, you know, how is that waste going to be handled? Is it going to go up to perm, be incinerated? So there are things that we are, you know, like I said, this whole thing is kind of evolving. And I can't give you a clear answer. All, all I can say is that yes, that waste has to be handled differently.
Then on page seven, under the renewal of registration, it says the city of Fergus Falls shall renew an annual registration. I wonder if we, that implies that we're obligated to as opposed to saying can renew?
Sure.
And, and later on, in the same kind of section, it says the cannabis retail registration under this ordinance shall be, shall not be transferred. I want to say we be more definitive and say cannot be transferred.
Yep.
Then, under the advertising on page nine, three point four, I kind of wondered if, whether we could clarify. It sort of says that cannabis businesses are permitted to erect two fixed signs, which implies you can put two signs up. And then it sort of says, unless otherwise limited. I wonder if we can just reword that to make it more clear that you have to kind of have, you got to adhere to the site ordinance first and add.
There are possibilities under our current sign ordinance where they could have more than two signs because it's based on the square footage of the building. So if we limit it to two signs and say that they must adhere to the square footage requirements, that keeps them to only two signs, even regardless of the size of their facade.
Okay, thank you. Then on page eleven, under these temporary events, I wondered if there should be something that, there has to be like a minimum days required prior to the event for application? Because somebody could just come in and say, I want to do this event Saturday, and it's Wednesday. And then under E on page eleven, obviously, I think it says nine AM to something.
Oh, yes. Yeah, there was a typo there, yeah.
And that was, and then if there's any additional costs, obviously, I know there's a fee to register, but would there then be, you know, coming back to waste management, you know, would there be, again, fees associated with kind of disposal of this product post that, you know, you would also be, that would be in part of the contract that you're signing up for? That you pay, you pay the cost of disposal?
And I think that that is something that we could work into the application itself as the requirement of those services. But I will make a note of that.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thanks, Anthony. Al?
Just a question, two for Kyle. As Clara brought up earlier, the distance from the building or the property line, what is that number? the building or the property line, what is that number when it comes to the private property usage event situation?
So I think, and there we put down what's the maximum distance allowed in, in the state statute, which is 500 feet from a park with children play features, residential treatment facility, a daycare, a thousand feet from a school, and we added residents in there as well.
Yep. I, I understand that. But as far as the residents, is that going from the property line or is it going from that house?
You know, it's an interesting point. You know, in our, in the ordinance, as Clara pointed out, they talk about building. When we apply distances, we, in state statute, like for example, there's a lot of distances that have, that pertain to possession of controlled substances, you know, that from there we, we are going from property line or, so again, I, I guess, I would probably have a stronger feeling to go from property line to property line, because that's how we apply it within state law. And I think it's just cleaner versus, you know, one section within our city ordinance that talks about from, from building. When you talk about like downtown from building to property line, there probably isn't that much difference. So, you know, you might have an extra five or 10 feet of property from the edge of the building, but you start getting out, you know, say on the west end of town, you know, that could make a big difference if you're measuring from property line versus buildings.
And, and that was my point. I think if, you know, if you're going to be consuming something on a property, it's usually not going to be just in that house.
Sure.
You have the whole property line.
Sure. We'll, we'll clarify that with, with property line you meant.
Any other questions for Kyle? All right. With that, we can have a motion to bring this to the council for a first reading.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Monday night. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Laura. Second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in, post same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, chief. Our next item, we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, for discussion on council vacancy and council appointments. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, your honor, members. Real quickly, probably lumped a couple of different items under the same thing here, but I'll start with the appointments so we can get those out of the way. With council member, or former council member Thompson resigning, that creates a vacancy on the Port Authority Board as well. As you all may recall, the Port Authority is seven members. It's made up of seven out of eight council members. Everybody was a member except for Councilmember Creameyer this year. And then going forward, somebody else would come off, the other council members go on, and there's always this constant rotation. So with the vacancy of Councilmember Thompson, we do have a vacancy on the Port Authority Board as well. And rather than have that board run a member short, the mayor suggested it would be a good time to appoint Councilmember Creameyer to that vacancy. So we can do that through a motion. And then the other vacancy that we have, as a result of some changes, the mayor was previously representing the city on the West Central Initiative Economic Development District Board. It's called EDD Board. And he is suggesting Councilmember Rachel's to be appointed at this time to that board as he had to step away from that board with the rationale that Councilmember Rachel's is now the city's representative on the Greater Fergus Falls Board, and there'll be some synergies there as he represents Greater Fergus Falls locally and then can bring that to the more regional board. So those appointments can be made by motion on Monday night. So if somebody wants to push those forward, then we can shift gears to the other topic here.
Thanks, Anthony.
I agree with that.
Thanks, Anthony. Second, Jim. Any discussion? All in favor of moving that to the, council on Monday nights? Say aye.
Aye.
All in, post same sign. That motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The other half of this item is related to the council vacancy. I think staff heard pretty loud and clear that the majority of the council's interpretation of forthright is to wait till after the election in November and then quickly seat whoever the successful candidate is in Ward Three. But it was asked of us to put this on the agenda this morning for conversation. So that's, that's what we're doing now. I don't have anything to present or prepared, but the council, I know, wanted to have more discussion. And, and if the council's consensus is in fact that we get through that election and then without delay, appoint the winner of that election to finish that term and then start their new term in January, then I think it would be appropriate just to have a motion to that effect. So we can let the public know where we stand and kind of put the issue to bed until that time. So that's my two cents.
So that we would look for a motion maybe to just put this on the agenda the first meeting after the November election? Is that, someone like to make that?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
I.
Scott, go ahead.
I, I think that generally that sounds like a reasonable way to go, but frankly, I think that it's a delay that we shouldn't take. I think that we should be acting sooner than that. Just my opinion. I think that we're, as we were told from Rolf earlier, forthwith means let's get on with it. And I think there's going to be things that we need to have full representation for, and it would have been best if we could have moved more quickly on this and found an appointment sooner rather than later. And then again, I don't know that we've heard from Rolf regarding the real legal details of whether someone can be seated right away after the election or not. And I, I'd like to hear an opinion on that. I don't know that that should just be an automatic because somebody makes a motion. I think there seems to be some, there ought to be some, you know, legal reason for how that could play out.
Well, I was just going to say if, if we can get that legal opinion on the first meeting after November as well, whether or not we can seat that person. But if that's the intention, go ahead, Andrew.
I'll just say, I've talked to Rolf about that, and Rolf's definition of forthwith is do it now, right? So you're, you're right about that. But there isn't any issue with appointing that person that's successful in the election as long as they meet the requirements, and that's filing the required campaign finance reports. It's canvassing the results. Well, you wouldn't even technically have to do that. But then it's also, you know, taking the oath of office. It will require a resolution, so there'll be, need to be five affirmative votes at that time as well. But there would be nothing prohibiting the council from appointing that person or anyone else, quite frankly, to finish out the term that expires on January 5th of next year. And then this person who wins the election will most definitely be seated one way or the other on January 6th or whatever the date is that our first council meeting. I don't know the calendar off the top of my head, but, you know, that person then would start their four-year term at that point in time. So I don't think legally there's any challenges. I mean, you could, you could appoint anybody at any time, whether it be now, two months from now, or the day after the election, whether it be the winner or not the winner, they just need five votes. And they're only filling, even if it's the person that wins the election in November, when you appoint them the next day or whatever that appropriate day is, they're only filling the remainder of that term until the end of the year, and then they get sworn in again on January 5th, 6th, whatever that date is.
Six.
Yeah, six. Okay, thank you.
What, November 18th is the next maybe?
So, okay. So if somebody's appointed November 18th, they're only being appointed to finish that term from November 18th to January 6th, and then they would have to be sworn in again to start their new four-year term on January 6th. And again, that could be anybody. But January 6th, that has to be the person that wins the election, of course. So I don't want to confuse it anymore than that.
So it's not the one that would be, let's say, the winner of the general election in Ward Three. It wouldn't automatically be that person?
Correct. It would have to get five votes to the council.
Do you find that kind of counterproductive to what the people voted in a way? And I think forthwith, like I said, we were, we're kind of hamstrung just due to the fact that the five votes and the way the, the charter commission or how the rules are, I think that, that made it difficult. And, you know, when you come to a general election and is voted for the people, by the people, that person, I just think that person who wins that election, because it's going to go a lot smoother for the city, I feel, because there could be some very unhappy people, especially the majority, if it's not that person that takes that seat right away.
Yeah, I don't think anyone would disagree with that.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know.
I mean, nobody in the world would disagree with that. I mean, I wasn't saying anything differently than that. I mean, I think it's just like, that's legal process. So on November 18th, if the council wanted to decide differently, I think they would be, the wrath of the people would be on them strong.
Well, I, I agree, but I think we, that's why we need to talk about these things and spell it out. You know, there's, it's always that what if, or what can happen, or what can be done, doesn't mean it's not going to be done.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's where I'm at with that comment.
Yeah, I don't think there's any way to justify appointing anybody other than the winner, but it is my duty to inform the council that they ultimately have that say, right? I wouldn't advise that. But you do ultimately have the authority to appoint anybody up until that point with five votes. Again, I don't know how you would ever justify it. So I completely agree with what you're saying.
Okay.
But that's, that's the reality of the situation.
Yeah.
Clearly, that's the intention, I think, of the waiting until the election.
And I think.
Use that as a justification for the appointment. So.
The motion that was made today.
Clearly spells that out.
Who'll be voted on, I think strongly implies if not is that specific, that we would appoint the winner of the election after the election. Maybe you want to get that specific.
I mean, why, why didn't you just say it?
Well, I, I think, I think it comes back to the fact that you've got to take the roll call. And as you say.
You need five votes.
You need five votes. So I mean, obviously, as, as Ben said, you would, you would meet the wrath of the people if you don't get five votes. So I think, I think it's, goes without saying that.
I think so. I think that. Thanks, Anthony. That definitely goes without saying. Okay. So we have a motion to put this on, the direct staff to have this as an item of, on the agenda on November 18th, following the election. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in, post same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Andrew. Next, we'll talk about website proposal from Gene Bowman and Clara Beck. Good morning, Gene.
Good morning, council and mayor. Yeah, Clara is the, been working on our website prior to my coming here. She's been the guru of our team. We have 78,000 website users every year. It's really the, the digital front door of our community. So, but behind the scenes, it's, it's been a bumpy ride. And even before I came on board, there were things about the functionality of our site that were not great. Our company is a behemoth of a company. They have really huge clients, and we're not a huge city. So there, there are bells and whistles with our package that don't fit us, functionality that doesn't suit us, really poor customer service. In the almost two years I've been here, we've had seven different customer service representatives. So we have been looking at alternate website providers, and the team behind this is Clara, Lynn, Dan, and Caitlin from the library, because the library has a sister site to ours. So we wanted to be sure that whatever we recommend also would suit them. So our recommendation in the memo to go with MuniBit really checks all those boxes. For me, the straw that broke the camel's back was when we went with the new logo and brand package. And, you know, in my experience with websites, that should be a kind of a plug and play. You know, you change the template page and it just makes the change throughout. That's not the case. They gave us an estimate of $7,000 to $10,000 just to incorporate our new brand package. So we really accelerated our timeline about three months ago, started talking with my colleagues throughout the state about who they were using, what they liked, what they didn't like. We met with and interviewed three different companies. So we were comparing apples to apples, and we recommend that we go with MuniBit. They are actually within the cost that we've already got budgeted for 2025, not more than we're currently paying. There's no cost to build the new site. We would transition over January 1st, which is when we would end our contract with Granicus. I should say, the, the MuniBit also allows us to embed the new civics platform, so we know that that will work really smoothly with our, our new platform with IT and finance. And I would just say that we're all very comfortable giving this company a shot. They're locally owned, family, or not locally, family owned, smaller company that I think is really right sized for our needs.
Thank you, Gene. Questions for Gene? Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I actually had an experience with the website. I like to log in and look at pictures of myself every now and again. And, no, I, someone had, I can't remember why, but I pulled up the website on my mobile phone and the formatting was just terrible. And I messaged Gene about it. And, yeah, I've never been super duper impressed with the city website. I agree with you. I think it is really important. It's, it is kind of the gateway, you know, city of Fergus Falls. And so I, especially since it sounds like the budget is right, I think we should do it.
Is that a motion to?
That is a motion.
Motion second. Okay. We'll bring this to the council on Monday night. Other questions for Gene? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in, post same sign. Thank you, Gene. Thank you, Clara. And we will call on Clara next to talk about a sculpture walk. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning. Yeah, my contribution to the website thing this morning was just going to be jazz hands. So we're excited. Thank you. I am here this morning working in, on behalf of the Public Arts Commission. We also have the chair of the commission here, Kim Embryson, who is going to give a little bit more detail on the program. But I did get a request from a council member that there be some visual aid to go along with this presentation. So just really broadly, there is a contingency of people here in Fergus Falls, artists, business owners downtown, citizens who are interested in seeing a sculpture walk be implemented in our downtown. Kim has personally led a couple of different groups through a process to determine what the best route would be for the sculpture walk, the best way to put the sculptures up. So he has a lot of detail on how this can actually come to fruition. But first, let's just take a look at maybe some other communities that are using sculpture walks. This is just a quick little video about Bemidji that might get you excited.
The Bemidji Sculpture Walk is celebrating 20 years this, 20 years. And this summer, we'll see a lot of color, intricate shapes, and interactive designs if you take a stroll through downtown. Reporter Sherelle Moore has a look at the new additions in this week's in focus.
20 years ago, there were a lot more closed stores. There just wasn't the vibrancy that you see today. And we kind of believe part of that is you can't necessarily compete price wise with the big boxes, but you can sure keep your historical downtowns interesting with specialty stores and art.
Tall and small, wood or metal, the Bemidji Sculpture Walk has seen dozens of creative pieces come and go over the past few decades. For the 20th anniversary, fans will see work by some new artists as well as a few familiar creators.
So Jeremy Hughes, the nephew, and John Hughes, his uncle, created this and.
So that's just an idea of how they do it in Bemidji. Gave you a little look at how they have those set up. Let's switch to some pictures from Hutchinson. That's a John Camrath sculpture. John Camrath is actually, he spent some time here in Fergus Falls. He lived at the Catits. He was a teacher at the high school. And he is a fairly well-known public artist now. He has sculptures all over the country. And that's an example from Redwing, which also has a sculpture walk. And then finally, the idea for the sculptures here in Fergus Falls would be that they are placed on a limestone stand downtown, which would be similar to the limestone that we've used in our Phase One, Phase Two of Downtown Riverfront updates. That is an example of a limestone brick from the Phase Two project. And now I will invite Mr. Embryson up to talk about the mechanics.
Welcome, Kim.
Thank you, your honor, members. It's a pleasure to be back here talking about art. It's something in my retirement I found to be very exciting for me personally. And when I started to realize in Bemidji, where I stopped to see Babe and Paul, when walking around the town, realized that there were a lot of other sculptures there, and then stopped into the stores, I thought, couldn't this be an economic driver for Fergus Falls? And we put together about 20 people that had conversations about downtown on Lincoln in particular, when they said they really liked the idea of the river development, but they weren't seeing necessarily a lot of people coming from the river to Lincoln. And so in talking with them, we said, if we put sculpture along Lincoln, it would be one more reason to kind of complete the loop of that kind of area. We're thinking six sculptures is the first time. So we wanted to keep it relatively small, something manageable. And they would be then dispersed at different corners, kind of from Union down to Cascade, with the idea that if somebody was interested in the sculpture walk, there would be a way to sort of walk both sides of Lincoln Avenue in that area. Hopefully, then they also stop in at the stores. When I talked to over 13 different businesses in the area about the idea of a sculpture walk, they're all enthusiastic about, if you could bring more people walking Lincoln Avenue, we'd be really in favor of doing that. So it seems like the art that's already been developing in Fergus Falls can also have an economic development component to it, as it has in the cities that Clara showed there. When I've talked to people in Hutchinson and Redwing and Bemidji, they all said definitely, it's not the only reason that is economic development, but it's one of the other layers that can be added. So when we looked at creating a business plan around this, we were able to come up with the idea of. with the idea of who would benefit both artists, who would be able to get a stipend for loaning their sculptures here for the year, would get fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars, depending upon which year we have them here. So that would be a benefit to artists in the area, but it would also be a benefit to the businesses to see people come through their stores. Also, for the people in the community to be able to see art displayed in a public way so that they don't have to go into a gallery, which can be intimidating for somebody who doesn't know much about art. This way, they would just be encountering it on the street, and it helps them interpret their world in maybe a unique way that they hadn't thought about before. So we saw that benefit, and we thought, so how would it technically work? We know that we have talked to John Camrath, who relies on sculpture walks throughout the United States for part of his business. So we kind of know how it works from an artist standpoint. From a city standpoint, how do you take care of this? Well, the Public Arts Commission has looked at the idea of if the Public Arts Commission would kind of supervise this, we would be able to write grants to grantors that normally support arts in Fergus Falls. And if we're able to raise the sixty-five thousand dollars plus that we think would take for the first three years, part of that would be hiring a manager. There would be a consultant that would then manage, how do you recruit, contract, pay out, and get people to bring the sculptures in? How do you get them established? You can't just put it on a limestone block. You have to have a steel plate bolted to that. So there's some technical stuff that needs to happen. The business plan includes having a professional welder that has a portable unit to be able to weld the sculptures to the metal plate that would be mounted on the block. And then having those placed, we'd have to coordinate that with city folks, because we don't want to put something that's going to be in the way for snow plowing or that would be a hazard to traffic. So we'd be able to coordinate with city staff to make sure we put it in a safe place and that we manage the money in a way that we can get reports back to our grantors so that they see that we've used their money wisely. So we would be using city staff in some coordinated way as well as marketing this information. But we think that if the city would be willing to be the fiscal host, to receive the grant, manage the money, and the Public Arts Commission then would be the group that would, as volunteers, would oversee the manager of this project, we think we could have a successful sculpture walk and would help the businesses that are in downtown Lincoln. Other places have been able to start small and then expand. Bemidji now has over thirty sculptures. Not all of them rotate, but in the case of Fergus Falls, they would rotate on an annual basis, so there would be new ones each year. And so the agreement with the artists would be to leave it for a year, but people can buy those. If they are purchased by an individual, the city, the Public Arts Commission, would take a portion of that, and the sculptor would get the major portion of it, much like a gallery operates. So it's essentially an outdoor gallery, and it kind of resonates with the arts community we've already started. So we're asking the city to be the fiscal host, receive the money, pay the money out, just like we did when we had the River Is Art Project that was about three years ago. So with that, Mayor, open up there if there's any questions.
Well, thank you, Kim, for the work on this, the Public Arts Commission, the enthusiasm, the work with the downtown businesses, and really appreciate the work. Yeah, Jim?
I'll make the motion that we become the fiscal host.
Become the fiscal host, yeah. Scott's second?
Second.
Yeah. Thanks for that. Yeah, again, I don't know if there's any questions, but I think it's a great idea, Scott.
I was the one that asked for the visual aid because I had no idea what this was about. And then after seeing Bemidji, I've seen him in Bemidji, now I remember that. And so I was, it was a great clarification for me, so I'm sure it'll help everybody else. Thank you.
Excited to see that partnership with the downtown businesses, and I think you're exactly right. I think we need ways to bring the people here every day on the new two blocks of Riverfrontage. It's great for our community. Now we just need to make sure that they're taking that extra block walk and, you know, and visiting our stores and frequenting the downtown businesses and making that economic impact on the community as well. Scott, did you have a question?
Yeah, I think that this will be something that the community will appreciate, and I look forward to seeing it come to pass. In the document that we got, it talks about how things would get started, but I don't know that you've addressed the question of how it might end, you might say. You know, what happens after three years? What do you foresee as far as the ongoing condition situation? You know, how would you see that play out?
Whenever I've worked in any new projects, it's also a learning process. The first year, you never get it quite right, although we know how other places have done it, so we're not starting brand new. And in that learning process, other places have found that, in the case of Bemidji, they've created a separate 501(c)(3). They started out with a gallery as the fiscal host and then became their own 501(c)(3) so that they were then managing all of the functions that the city was doing. In the case of Hutchinson, where they started out with the Public Arts Commission, they've stayed with the Public Arts Commission, and they found that that to be a very successful way between sales and grant money, they've been able to keep it going. They had to limit it. They couldn't do unlimited, but they only do twelve rotation sculptures each year. And Redwing is now in the process of trying to decide. It had been with this gallery, and they're looking after about ten years of how they can transition. And they're looking at the city as one of the possibilities to be again the fiscal host, looking for grantors who would continue to support it. Some places have found out that it's so successful that some of the larger businesses in the community want their name on the sculpture, so they're willing to pay the two thousand dollars that goes to the artist to have their name there as a way of promoting arts in a community. We're not sure which of those directions we would go, but within three years, we'd know which ones would go. I also want to mention that Michelle Anderson was here today. She was one of the people that we consulted because she certainly knew her work with the artists in the area, understands how artists would be involved in it, because it's two sides, economic development and promoting the arts in the community. So.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Kim. And thanks to the Public Arts Committee, as I said, but also, Kim, thanks to you. I mean, we know that these kind of projects take someone to drive them, and I would say that your retirement's been very beneficial for the city.
And for me, too.
Just got one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I like your project.
Thank you.
And I think as a lot of people enjoy art, they'd like to see it mixed in downtown. The only question I have is I looked this page over with the numbers. As far as project manager stipend of forty-five hundred dollars, how is that spent?
It would be hiring a person who would be an independent contractor.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be an employee. And we've, in talking to other people in the arts community, we know that there are several people who have that kind of ability to organize, plan, you know, meet deadlines, get things done, as well as have connections with artists to encourage we get good quality sculptors showing up. We don't know who that would be. That would depend upon who's willing and has the time.
Sure.
Forty-five hundred dollars isn't enough to live on, but it's certainly enough for a project manager. We anticipate about a hundred hours of work to get this up, because once the contracts are led to the artist and the artist installed, then you kind of wait another year until you do it again. It isn't a full-time job.
Because are those mostly metal pieces of art? Because if they have to be welded onto a plate, or how else would they be affixed on that limestone?
Yeah, they have to be all-weather, so they have to be able to sit outside all year long. And they have to have, part of the requirements is they would have to have at least three tabs that can be welded to steel. That's in a contract originally. So it'd be up to the artist to decide whether it's stone or steel, or in some cases, it might even be wood that can be weathered for that timeframe, but they would have to be able to be welded in order to be stable, upright, safe. That kind of thing.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Well, again, thanks, Kim. Thanks to the Public Arts Committee. We have a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Foes same sign. That motion carries.
Mayor members?
Thank you, Kim. And again, we'll call on Clara Beck for, I believe, Michelle Anderson's here for this next item, the Falls Community Arts Exchange.
Yes, I will be quick. The request of council this morning is to send this on on Monday to be to provide a letter of commitment from the city of Fergus Falls for Springboard for the Arts, their new residency program. I think we're all familiar with the great work that the Hinge Residency brought to Fergus Falls. This is a new iteration of how Springboard is going to be working with the community and with artists from outside the community. It will be a little bit more targeted than the Hinge one. They will be bringing artists in who will have specific connection points within the community where they'll be working on projects that either help make economic development stronger or help with community engagement, things like that. So all the cities being asked to do is provide a letter of commitment saying that we will be a good partner in this project, that we will provide at least one person to sit on the selection committee and that we will be a connection point for those artists who are coming to town. And I did invite Michelle here this morning in the event that maybe you have questions specifically about the new program, because I cannot answer those very well, but Michelle sure can. So that's all from me.
Thanks. Thanks, Clara. Well, let's get a motion to get that on. I think everyone would agree that that Hinge Artist Program residency has been a tremendous thing to the, you know, the energy it's brought, the economic development, the people, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you for your work on that, Michelle. And I would say on behalf of the city, I think we're happy and excited to be a partner in this new endeavor. So we have a motion from Anthony. Thanks, Anthony. Someone like to second that motion. Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Clara or Michelle? I mean, I guess we'd invite you back at some point to maybe give an update and tell us who, you know, who's coming, how they're coming, how the project's coming along. So all in favor of bringing this to the council on Monday night, say aye.
Aye.
Foes same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Clara. Thanks, Michelle.
I believe.
Yep, we're starting to get the departure signs here. So Brian steps to the podium, people start to leave.
It's nothing to do with
Good morning, Brian Uvaro.
Good morning. I'll make this quick on these, I'm pretty sure they're self-explanatory on the memos, next three memos, but this in regards to Public Improvement 5961, the Junius Ample Street Utility Reconstruction from Yankee Avenue Cascade. Interstate Engineering has substantially completed the project plans specifications. The estimated construction cost is about one one million and three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Because of that, we got to publicly advertise for a minimum of twenty-one days. I just want to know, we don't have a bid date yet because Men.District Four still has to do their completion, their review and approval of this project. I mentioned here where the, like past projects, I'm going to recommend we follow the same because there's special assessments associated with the project. So what we're requesting, we take bids, we take those bid numbers, we insert them into the final assessment rolls, and then I'll request that we hold a preliminary final cost hearing prior to awarding or contingent awarding the construction contract at that time for a loan protection. So as presented at preliminary cost hearing, this project's funded by a combination PIR four twenty-nine bonds, small portion of MSA, Santer Sewer Water and Storm Sewer Enterprise Fund. So at this time, I'm requesting a resolution accepting the project plans and specifications. And on the second thing, a resolution authorization to advertise for bids for Public Improvement 5961.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. Jim.
Second.
Scott's second. Yeah, and in all honesty, we know these are important projects, and we won't rush them. We will have plenty of time to consider them on Monday night and ask any questions. So we thank you, we do thank you for the work. Junius is obviously an important project. So we do have a motion to bring this to the full council on Monday night for consideration. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Foes same sign. That motion carries. Next, it's the Public Improvement nine three four six, the airport taxi lane.
Yes, back in 2020, Central Specialties was awarded the construction contract for an airport taxi lane relocation project. This work is completed. Just give you a little history. This was noted in a fifty-ten inspection by the by the state. Because of it, this taxi lane that was in existence for decades was finally noted on the fifty-ten. It was an airside need because it was located in the airport runway protection zone. Therefore, because of the need, the FAA and state were funding this project at ninety-five percent in the city at five percent. As the work progressed, we had a little bit of unsuitable soils and some tax, excuse me, some tax leaks, and some drain tile, existing drain tiles. We inspected these, we extended the drain tiles accordingly and removed the unsuitable soils as well. There's an overage on this project, so we contacted the state and FAA to discuss these added construction costs. Both agencies agreed to the additional construction change and additional funding. However, it's taken this long to get this amendment that's included in the packet before you, because there has been a series of retirements with the FAA and state representatives and everything. However, I just received a grant that memorializes this. So I just want to know on the budget, the initial estimated project cost was about five hundred seventy-five thousand. The total construction cost came to a six hundred and thirty thousand. As I know, the city share was twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. The revised amount is thirty-one thousand five hundred, so it's really equating with that cost to an increase of two thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars to the city. So and we have funds in the Airport four fifty-six fund to approve that. So at this time, I'm just requesting a resolution to accept the state federal grant amendment number one to the 2019 Airport Taxi Lane Relocation Project.
Thanks, Brian. We can bring that resolution to the council through a motion by this committee.
Make that.
Thank you, Scott. And Scott, questions for Brian? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Foes same sign. That motion carries to the council on Monday evening. Last item on the agenda is Public Improvement five three seven three, Shoreview Drive Street Improvement.
Yes, thank you. Yes, city staff, we've completed the substantially completed project plans and specifications for Public Improvement five three seven three. This is a project of Shoreview Drive. The estimated cost for this project is two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We must advertise for bids for a minimum of ten days. I don't have the actual bid date yet because I'm actually just trying to finish up the plans and specifications. Just like the Junius project I talked about, we're going to try to do the final cost hearing prior to awarding the construction contract. In regards to schedule, I am going to, we've been inundated with water this year, and that's, we will try to get this project completed, but in the interest of getting better bid pricing, I may do a working day contract with a substantial completion next year. We've done this on past projects, some in Laurel and everything, and speaking with the contractors. That's been very beneficial, because if we were, if our anticipation is to have it completed this fall, we might not even get a bid. So that flexibility does happen. It's been very beneficial. And I just want to know, too, that's where I'm looking to do the Junius project as well. We just need to get the good bid pricing to help with the assessment rolls. So at this time, I'm requesting a resolution accepting the project plans and specification and a resolution authorization to advertise for bids for Public Improvement five three seven three.
Thanks, Brian. And we can, again, bring this to the council on Monday night. Thank you. Jim? Thanks, Laura. Questions for Brian?
Question.
Brian, will that work be done next year?
I'll give him flexibility on it. I'll give him a working day. So basically, a working day, once you start, you have this many days to complete. However, you have to get it completed within this window.
So that could be done this year?
Possibly, yes. It just allows a contractor with their resources, labor's getting to be a big thing, it just gives them an opportunity to schedule their resources to fit the project.
Scott?
This may be Brian or Bill both, but in a situation like this, for this specific project or anything similar to this, where it may carry over into another year, how it affects homeowners' special assessments? If the project doesn't get done until next year, their assessments don't begin until next year? Is that how it plays out?
We spoke of that, and, yeah, in past projects, we're still under contract with this, you know, once we sign the contract and adopt the final assessment rules. But we understand that because of that, like I mentioned, that contract completion. So when we come to the final assessment hearings and everything, we're probably going to make the first payment due next spring at least, instead of, you know, what we've experienced on some of these past projects and everything. So that's been already discussed.
And I'll add to that a little bit.
And I'll add to that a little bit. It got a little messy last year, and we found out in our, physically in our system, we can't send out those what we call first bills. Those are those first letters where, you know, your assessment, you could pay it off without interest if you want by 30 or 45 days. We can't do that during August when we're billing the annual assessments. That's where some of the dates got screwed up, and we had to pencil through them last year. So like Brian is saying, we're, we'll push off that process probably till next spring, since they're really most likely to happen next spring, and get past our annual billing now. So our special assessment system doesn't have problem, you know, mechanically have a problem with it. So we learned that last year.
Just as, whether it was this project or any other one, when something carries over from one year to the next, I guess I was just wanting clarification on the process, is that basically the assessments aren't due if the project isn't done?
Well, and when you levy the assessments as a city council, they are due and payable then. It, but then we're going to have you as a council clarify that now, this, that the, the period of time to, you know, give you the option to pay without interest, you know, normally that's 30 to 45 days. We're going to push that longer now. One, because our system, it doesn't work well at this time of the year, and two, pushing that to next year. But they are due and payable, but the annual payments wouldn't start till the bills that go out in August of 2025, because we're billing now at the end of August the annual assessment payment. So, yeah, they may start construction now, but you are levying the assessments when you do the final cost hearing, which really may come even after August, right?
Correct.
It's really going to be probably September, October, maybe.
And at that time, the city would already have a contract with a contractor, too, so an obligation to complete that project. So.
Thank you.
All right. So we have the motion. We didn't vote on this motion yet, did we? No. Okay, so we have the motion to bring it to the council on Monday night. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I do not believe there's any other business to come before the council. Laura?
So, I'm not sure for bringing up the Lacy's housing tax credit again. How can we, for Monday evening? I know that
Oh, the one that was denied, the tax rebate?
Yes.
So you, you voted against it?
I did.
And you would like to reconsider?
Yes.
So we'd bring a motion to, we'll check with Rolf, but thank you for letting us know.
Monday evening.
We'll, we'll, we'll get the legal, but if you voted no and you want to reconsider, you could bring that up as a motion to reconsider.
On Monday night?
On Monday night.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good enough? All right. With that, we're adjourned. Thanks, Laura.